Just to say Jackie, I'm just going to get a couple of minutes because Jackie may arrive. I'm sure she should. We haven't had apologies from her, have we? No. I'll say it because Jackie's not here, but Jackie's timekeeping is not her strong point. So we have a rule at South Hams is that no one's late unless they arrive after Jackie.
Realised too many.
Well, no, everyone knows. Right, okay, so we just give it a couple of minutes to see if Jackie arrives. Other than that, we will press on, or maybe we'll press on anyway, because to begin with, it's just sort of admin stuff. So welcome everyone to Cabinet 23rd of May, 23rd of May. And a new administration, so lots of work to do. Hi Andrew. That's right, no, don't worry. Right, so agenda item one, apologies for absence.
Thank you Chair, just apologies from Councillors Thomas, Vickley and Keeling.
Thank you. Item two, declarations of interest. Do any members have declarations of interest to make? No. Item three, the minutes. So I appreciate that none of us were here. Lee James tells me he watched it on YouTube, so that's good. If we could sign those off as a correct record. Are you happy for me to do that? Yep, lovely, thank you. Item four, items requiring urgent attention. There are none as far as I know.
None to my knowledge, Chair.
No, announcements, any announcements? No, no petitions, no questions from members of the council, all questions from members of the public. So we move straight on to item nine. Hi Jackie. County Council Internal Fostering Offer. So I'm going to hand over to Richard. Appreciate that you've been in post for less than 24 hours, so we'll give you a little bit of slack, but.
A little bit of slack would be great. I was going to start off by saying yes, I've been in post for less than 24 hours. But I'd like to introduce this piece of work. This is to strengthen the fostering offer that is available to foster carers in Devon valuing their service. And this is going to bring Devon in line with some of the national best practice. And obviously it's the beginning of particularly my journey, but it's part of the journey towards a longer term programme improvement.
Thank you, Richard. Julian, did you want to say any words at this stage?
No, I'd agree with Richard that this is the beginning of a process of work we need to do to enhance our fostering offer. And as you will know, these are local foster carers, so they're local residents of Devon. So it's about supporting them and developing them. I think it's probably a bit of work we need to do with members more generally, just to understand how many foster carers they have in each of their electoral divisions in terms of that work. Steve's on the screen as well, just to give you a bit of background of the consultation we've done with our foster carers. As how we've got to where we are now in terms of the proposals, if that makes sense for you, Leader.
Thank you Julian. Steve, welcome. And any comments to add?
Thank you very much. Just to add really that the proposals set out in the report fall into three groups. Those which relate to the national minimum allowance for foster carers and establishing an equipment and activities budget are very much about giving clarity to our foster carers and supporting the retention of the foster carers that we currently have. Julia mentioned the numbers of foster carers previously. I can't say that by area within Devon, but overall we have about 250 foster carers at the moment. 210 of which are mainstream foster carers, so they look after any child who they can look after any child who becomes looked after by the council. The others are connected persons who are a friend or relative of the child who've been assessed and approved as foster carers. The second part of the proposal relates to providing foster carers with a rebate equivalent to a proportion of their council tax. And that will take us in line with practice in our neighbouring local authorities, most of whom offer a similar scheme to their foster carers. And then finally, a proposal for the introduction of reviewing officers for, within the fostering service, which is about ensuring consistency and improvement in the standard of service that foster carers are providing to the children who are the responsibility of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Andrew, did you want to? Sorry, Jackie, do you want to?
I was a foster carer for a long time when I lived in. One of the young people paid for us. I just care that she was so successful. Thirty seven now, thirty six. What the turning point for her really was, I think, and I think this is what's not in the report when raising it, is that as she left full time care, then supported by local authority and the local services, for four years through university at Limerick. So that really helped her to gain her independence while still having her own social worker and her. And I think as soon as she came out of that, she was used to not being part of a family, she'd still had some element of care. She's one of the few actually that gets a third degree and goes on to be successful. And so I think it's really interesting that I think that could be one of the things that we may need to think about, how we integrate that support, you know, where we're going from the foster carers' family as such, to actually the bit where, you know, that third level. That was all funded, which I think would be quite daunting in this young age where they don't have grants available. There's that fear of kind of, you know, where do I go? Or maybe not having staff taking drop. I think it's an important transition that makes a big difference to the future of young people.
You know, thanks for sharing that Jackie. I mean, I think it's an area where we absolutely want to look at and see what we can do. I mean, within the financial constraints that we have, but you know, I think you're absolutely right. And of course, that investment is worth so much more later on in their lives. And obviously, you know, for the child themselves, I mean, what a great story. So thank you for that. Andrew.
Thank you Leader. I mean, as you say, it's a great idea, but I suppose I probably would say that because it happened when I was still Cabinet Member for Children's Services, so I'm delighted that you think it's a great idea. We need to do everything we can to encourage fostering, foster carers and keep them. Because obviously, as you know, that's the best place for children to be, in a family, other than to go anywhere else. So I think anything we can do to encourage our offer is superb. So yeah, I look forward to seeing more of this. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that Andrew, and yeah, and congratulations to the previous administration. Can, is there someone on screen? Oh yeah, Steve, did you want to say something?
Sorry. Thank you. This is the first of two sets of proposals that we're going to bring to you to improve the offer that we make to our foster carers. And in the second set of proposals that we will bring to you following consultation with foster carers later in the year, there will be reference to what's called staying put, which is the arrangement by which young people who are in a foster placement at the age of 18 can remain with those foster carers for three or four years after their 18th birthday, which reflects what happens in other families, where young people don't all leave at the age of 18. We have about 46 young people at the moment who are continuing to reside with their former foster carers post 18. And we will be addressing some improvements in that offer in the report that we bring to you later in the year. It's also worth mentioning that for young people who are in residential care at the age of, when they reach the age of 18, we are also in the process of establishing staying put arrangements, which means that we provide intensive support and supportive accommodation for that group of young people. We now have 12 places which are directly provided to provide staying put accommodation with another 10 planned over the course of the next few weeks. So we are taking steps to ensure that young people, when they reach the age of 18, continue to get support as they move into adulthood.
Thank you. Steve, thank you for that, and that's good news. And you know, that's an area obviously that Jackie highlighted there and, you know, obviously it works and works well. From, can I just ask a question about, you spoke there about the districts and support that are given in council tax discounts and things like that. So how much liaison cooperation is there with the districts around this area of foster carers? I mean, do you meet up with the 151 officers or the equivalents at district to come up with a coordinated and consistent approach?
This proposal in relation to the council tax is based on a rebate of a percentage of the Devon County Council element of the council tax, which is the largest element of the council tax. And as you'll have seen from the report, it's proposing a 50% rebate for those foster carers who look after children for more than 26 weeks throughout the course of the year and a 25% rebate for those who look after children for 13 weeks or more over the course of the year. So in that respect, it doesn't directly relate to districts, although through the Corporate Parenting Board, there are ongoing discussions with district councils about the numbers of looked after children and care leavers in their areas and the numbers of foster carers who may need some support from their local district council.
Thank you. Julian, did you want to come in there?
Yeah, I think the, it's, you know, just to be upfront, we've still got a lot of work to do in this area in terms of supporting children and young people as they leave care. So that's clearly a big issue for us corporately, as corporate parents, and also with our colleagues in district councils. I think it's fair to say that collectively, there's much more we can do together and would welcome obviously political leadership in that space to help us with that work. And, you know, in a sense, children's services as young people become 18 aren't always the best place to help young people in terms of navigating to becoming adults. We've got duty to support them up to 25, but actually it's support from employers, businesses and colleagues in other public services, which are just as critical as what we do in the children's services space as well.
Thank you.
I think it's important to point out that this is a subset of a huge piece of transformation work. So it's important to say today, and you know, with the Ofsted report, that, you know, in terms of the four areas where we have huge transformation still ahead, you know, our front door and our partnership working is safe now. It requires improvement and we're working on that. Our leadership and management are plans around improvement, or it requires improvement. But this area of having homes for children is still a major area for improvement. That's not quite at the level we would want it to be. We have to emphasise that today and I'm looking to the Deputy Leader because to get that in place so that children, the kinship support, how we support families in terms of what we're putting into prevention and early help. We started from a base of no early help provision. We have, I think, tripled the resource in that in the last few years. We need still to do more. And so, you know, when we get to fostering or we get to residential, we should have the ambition not for any children to be going into residential. That should be what we should be aiming for. But to get that, we need much stronger, it's not a Devon County Council task, it's a partnership task. So, you know, I think there's something this, we're bringing forward that transformation programme to county in June and July. We're working on it, but I think there's something about how yourselves can actually take that into the partnership space in a different way. We have a formal team Devon Committee now, but I think that we need to move into a space where there's an improvement plan and team Devon Committee about this, and we've got very clear asks and very clear milestones. We have an improvement plan that we're held to account for and the lead members will be held to account for in terms of statutory intervention, but we're still in a space where our partners are not being held to account for the role they have to play. So I just ask you to consider that as soon as possible because we are often got housing challenges, but equally so there are other things that these partners, as Julian is saying, that can be doing much better, as well as we need to recognise what we need to do much better. But for those two indicators that are still a worry for us, they will not improve in terms of children and care and care leavers unless our partners are held to much stronger account in terms of what we need from them.
Right, thank you. Right, Members, Rich, sorry, Cheryl.
It was just a question about the fostering equipment. I noticed there's 80,000 in the budget. I was just wondering how that's allocated. Is that going to be like a grant system that people have to apply for? Or is it equally distributed amongst the foster carers?
Steve, if you answer that, thank you.
Thank you. It will be allocated according to need. So it's not, it doesn't mean that a foster carer will get an annual allowance. For new foster carers, it would mean ensuring that they have the right the right equipment for the task that they're going to take on. For existing foster carers, it would be about replacing items as they were needed. So, for example, it's considered to be good practice to, if you're looking after a baby, to replace the mattress in the cot each time you have a new child. So it would cover the cost of mattresses for those carers who are looking after babies. It would be used for car seats and/or for replacement buggies. We recently had a foster carer who was going to be looking after two young children and needed a buggy that was going to be able to cater for both of them at the same time. So again, it would be used for those purposes. So it's as and when the need arises to ensure that foster carers are able to do the tasks that we're asking of them.
Thanks, Simon.
Thank you Leader. Yes, I just wanted a little bit of practical parity if it's possible, please. The council tax relief scheme 3.9, and it's the fifth paragraph where it says carers would need to apply for the payment. Are they prompted by email or communication to make that, or do they have to do that themselves? Thank you.
Yes, Steve, if you can answer that, that'd be great.
Thank you. They will be prompted by their supervising social worker who, if Cabinet agrees to this proposal, then we would immediately ask the supervising social workers to be getting the evidence required for providing the rebate over the course of the next few weeks, so that we can then make the payments during the course of June and July. So the only thing that foster carer will need to do is to provide us with a copy of their council tax bill for the previous year, so that we can see what their charge was. And then the rest of it will be done within the council.
Steve, thank you. Right, and any more questions or comments? No, in which case, I mean, Richard, do you want to move the proposals as they are?
I'd like to move the proposals as they are, yep.
Okay, yeah. Well, that's, we'll get, that'll be best, we'll do it more smoothly next time. No, we'd just like to add an extra recommendation, and that is that I would write to all foster carers and thank them for the fantastic job that they do for the children of Devon. So we're okay with that. So that would be a G? Yeah. P, thank you. Okay, so with that extra recommendation, are you happy to move those, Richard?
Happy to move those.
Yeah, and I will second that. So could I see all those in favour, please, show? Lovely, thank you, that's unanimous. Great, so agenda item 10. Unfortunately, Richard can't be with us. But so Paul has kindly agreed to step in to take that. So over to you, the local Health Watch contract.
Thank you very much indeed Chair. So as you'll see on your agenda papers on page 15, we'll be asked to look at three recommendations here today. The background is it's to do with Health Watch, which is an independent consumer voice in health and social care. In essence, it gathers public feedback and then delivers that back up through us to government. It's a statutory obligation, so local authorities required to do this. I mention that because if you look a little bit further on in your papers, I think the next page, a couple of pages later, you'll see the cost. That's on page 18, and it might on the surface of it seem quite chunky. It's cost to us is 384,000 a year over the next five years for a total contract value of 3.72 million. So it's not something we should just take lightly and think about it a little bit today. However, on the positive side, this is something we have been doing for some time with Plymouth City Council and Torbay Council. So the intention is to go out to procurement and to work with them still on that procurement. But it's anticipated that that would deliver a saving of 8% across the board. One of the reasons to continue to do it with Plymouth and Torbay is that the footprint covered the Integrated Care Board would not be affected by any future local government reorganisation. So it gives a consistency there. There had been some thought about implementing shorter break clauses to allow the contract to end in the advent of LGR. But that doesn't represent best practice and providers would struggle with recruitment and retention with shorter break clauses. So we're looking at a six-year contract with a three plus three duration break. And that's in section three of the report. And it's therefore recommended in terms of viability for new business and stability for the provider. There's an impact assessment in there as well. And I think Leader, that is as much as I can do to introduce the report, but Tandra's over there and I'm sure she'd be happy to come in if needs be.
Yeah, thank you Paul. Tandra, do you want to just fill in what Paul left out?
I think he covered it really well. I suppose the only thing I would add is, yes, it is a statutory requirement. Health Watch provide an essential voice for local people to raise concerns about health and social care services. And they sit as part of our Performance and Assurance Board and helping inform the response to our Care Quality Commission. So our improvement journey. So they are an integral stakeholder. And I think also as councillor Arne has highlighted, we're already jointly commissioning it with our two other neighbouring authorities, which helps, I think, overall for the residents of Devon.
Thank you. Members, any questions, queries? Andrew, did you want to?
As you say, it's a statutory requirement, you've got to do it. So I'll trust you to get the best possible deal for the residents and the council.
Thank you. No, thank you for that. Can I ask a question? I mean, Tandra, it's a statutory requirement. I mean, in your professional opinion, what benefit does it actually bring?
So we're given money by government, I suppose, I didn't make that clear. So we get national voices money. One of our key objectives within adult social care is co-production. So making sure that we hear the voice of the individual. So they offer us a perspective on how things are working. If there was something I would like to see improve in the new arrangement is a greater focus on adult social care and NHS services tend to be focused on more, but that's because there are more of them, they're more universal, whereas adult social care is particularly targeted. But they do provide an essential voice, I think, for the consumer to highlight to us where they're unhappy with either our services. So we get feedback on our adult social care assessment arm, our provider services, or the independent sector as well. So I think we need it and there is a national Health Watch, but I presume, I don't know how much of a background you have on it. So I think it is essential and I think it's helpful that it was introduced because it sort of brings together an understanding of how local health and social care services are working.
Yeah, sorry Paul.
Yes, thanks Tandra. This one's probably not for you, it's just for us as a new cabinet to understand the procurement process in this. Moving forward, your framework, so if somebody's got something on that, it'd be good to hear. Thank you. Oh, sorry, it was just about how we, so if we do this, then the procurement process begins. Just for us to understand as cabinet how procurement structures work at the council. In other words, how we go out presumably.
Yes, yes, so we'll go out for, I'm not going to go into the technicalities, it's a while since I've run a process. But we will go out in the usual way to an open process for tender. We're doing this jointly with Plymouth and Torbay, so they're getting agreements from their cabinet at the same time. And we need the appropriate amount of time to do this. So you'll see that we're doing this, so there'll be a smooth transition. So there will be competition and we will get the best price that we possibly can. Hence the debate about the break clauses and what will be more attractive to an independent provider from the voluntary sector. So I would say that most Health Watches are from community and voluntary sector.
Okay, Donna, just.
On a technical point, Leader and Members, this paper was produced and is at a time where our ICB is going under significant change. That's not in the public domain yet. There is national directives on that. And the future of our ICB in Devon is not clear yet, but we know, maybe Tandra, you can give us a bit of background on that, that they are being amalgamated. They need to work to, I think, 18 pounds, 96 pounds per population in terms of operating costs. As an example, there's a 50% reduction in ICB structures nationally. So my question is that this paper is in May, there is talk in the paper about Cornwall and Somerset, but there are discussions nationally that our ICB could be expanded into Cornwall, Iseley, Dorset and Somerset. So my question is, if it's to match the ICB footprint, and that's happening in quarter two stroke three of this year, what will be the scope to expand this into that ICB footprint? And apologies Members, but this is not in the public domain yet, it's developing week by week. But I think the national information about this is out there, Tandra, so if you can just give us that clarification.
So the current plan is to merge Cornwall and Devon ICB. And as Chief Exec has just outlined, to significantly reduce the running costs of the Integrated Care Board. So that's the background administration rather than, I mean, obviously their provider services have significant reductions. This is a local Health Watch. I think we've got time to think about whether there's a merger of contracts in a later route. So there are break clauses, so we could do this at the appropriate point and that might help further. However, the geography is such that I think in order to get a truly representative Health Watch, you would still need a significant office in Devon and a significant office in Cornwall. So I think there might be some economies of scale available, but not huge. I think the opposite direction, as I understand it, west of England are still staying together. And that's about four or five local authorities will go into a new ICB.
Thank you for that, Tandra. Thank you for that, Tandra. I mean, obviously with the break causes, that gives us the opportunity there. Just, just another quick question. Do the, do the Health Watch report to our scrutiny committee?
They sit as part of our health and wellbeing board, and they do come to our scrutiny committee and will produce reports. We have, because we're very focused on co-production and the user voice, we do work closely with the voluntary sector, and they are one of the groups that will bring, if you were to commission them to look at a particular area, for example, they will go away and do that and bring that back.
Okay, no, thank you for that. I mean, I suppose my, my concern might be that what the work that they're doing, is it, they're not duplicating or replicating work that's already been done by other bodies?
No, I mean, they are the recognized national independent watchdog for health and social care.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions, queries? No, in which case, Paul, would you like to move the recommendations?
Happy to move the recommendations, Chair. Thank you.
And I will second those. All those in favor, please show. Thank you. That's unanimous. Agenda item 11, that's the performance statement. And I'll lead on that. Obviously, this is performance about our previous strategic plan. As a new administration, we will be producing our own strategic plan, and we will obviously have our own performance is to indicate us to see how we're progressing with that. I, I think probably the, the interesting bit is, is on page 32. When we're looking at the areas where the, you know, it's always, when you get these indicators, you want to know where it's going wrong. I mean, a lot of it is going well, and that's good, but there are some areas where we could and should be doing better. And you can see the red ones highlighted there for seven, nine, 12, 16 in total. Yes. So I don't know if there's any comments that members would like to make about these. Jackie.
Thank you. Are we going to look at the performance statement separately, or is it, do you need to cover, if you want to cover it now?
I, I think we do it all together, Jackie. So there's bits in the performance statement you want to talk about now is the time.
Thank you. Yes. So it's, obviously, there's a couple of red indicators under responding to the climate emergency. And there's other elements where there's, but there's a red in every, every performance strategic indicator. But I'll specifically just talk about the climate change, environment and transport pages that have been produced with Meg Booth at the top. I just wanted to really raise and put into context in terms of going forward, some of the conversations we had yesterday. So the thing about these 20s plenty and then requests that I've sought for a new policy, that really comes into quite a lot of people look at that page, which is sort of halfway through your printed copy. Can't work out what the page is on there, but it's under the improvement plan update that Meg's provided. The whole thing about safer streets really does feature quite a lot as an opportunity to improve all round. And I think if we can get focus on speeds generally as part of looking at that policy, I think we could actually start to see a much safer Devon. I've kind of been very carefully looking around over the years that the different differentials between safe, some places you can have a 40 mile speed limit, but no, obviously, obvious reason that then it's not somewhere else and the same with 30s. And those are the sort of differentials I think people notice, but also it's one of the big pieces of work that's been going on for the last year is really trying to look at how we could know. And I, you know, give credit to Andrea Davis for this, for all the work she's did with the bus improvement scheme, trying to get people on public transport. You know, these are kind of quite wide strategic objectives, but they kind of, they get stymied when we've got sort of fast dangerous roads that people have to try and get across, or that we want to try and do different things on those roads. We're still everybody's belting along and creating an unsafe environment. People think, well, the safest place is to be in a car, not on a bike, not walking, not trying to run, run for a bus. So I think there's elements there that fall into this, you know, supporting public transport recovery, reduce people being killed. I mean, they've shown that in Wales that the 20s plenty works there, assist in engagement, getting people to have confidence to use buses again. And all those things, but you know, we could start to change the culture. And I think that's something that, you know, is what we need to do if we're going to really achieve anything or any of our real targets for climate change. The thing about flooding, I mean, we've got flooding is, is a big issue. And of course, we've had in the last couple of years, a lot of places have had serious flooding. And its first two points under Meg's thought there, talking about citizen engagement and working with town parish councils. I think this is a real opportunity to actually use what we do have there on the, on the, on those places is the length and service, the length and service. So I'm probably not doing what I shouldn't. It's microphone. I'm sorry, Karen. But it's the length of the service. I've seen the parishes I go to really struggle to know how to direct a lengthman. And then, of course, a big flood happens, and it's like they're completely literally overwhelmed. And I feel that there's an opportunity for us to maybe give a little bit more support to the lengthman in terms of training and active, sort of like where Plaques can ring up and say, what, what should sort of things, how do we start that ball rolling to getting good services? But also the need to actually get more groups, community groups, again, supported. The Environment Agency is doing quite good work here. And I've seen our officers, our flood team from here come out. They came to one of my parishes after there was a house got filled with mud a couple of years ago. And, you know, instead of coming to an angry crowd, as the people walked out, we're really, oh, that's really good. We can get together and we can do these leaky dams and we can, you know, get our farmers to do things a little bit differently. A whole positive, bringing the community together. So I think those are things that we could try and see how we could enhance more and actually capture more of what would be good partnership work and actually, you know, good, better value. And the only other thing I was going to say was that it's not on here is anything about biodiversity. And one of the projects that we do have that's been running for some years now with our, you know, very good ecology team here is the life on the edge. So we've got the, on the verge, edge or verge we have here. I think it's life on the verge. But it's where we don't cut the verges. And a lot, time and time again, you know, communities say, oh, we've got a lovely, you know, we've put some extra seeds in because it's making it lovely. And they turn around and it's all been cut when it wasn't meant to be. So I think something a little bit more coordinated from here to help people have, you know, some can think they can download and put in those places to indicate that they don't want them cut. It'll save money for us and it will have happier communities and we'll have happier wildlife and happier birds. So I think there's some things that we can build on the, what came up yesterday, which I saw a lot of enthusiasm for supporting the Swifts. So that's just a starting point. I just wanted to raise those points. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, Jackie. And I mean, as a portfolio holder in that area, I mean, we, we've got a basket of performance indicators. I'm sure that there will be others that you'd be interested to add. And I think you're right about biodiversity. Absolutely. That's something that we could do. Just on the cutting of verges, I mean, obviously, there is a balance to be had there. There's a safety issue. And I know some parishes get very perturbed that we, you know, we're leaving the hedgerows and then people can't, they're coming out of blind junctions. So we must always bear that in mind, but, but yeah.
Just very briefly, if I may just come back. For example, we have fabulous maps online for report it. We could have a map for that where people can actually go on a mark where they want the verges to can be considered not for cutting. Because if the, if the, if the little sign they put in, somebody runs off with it, then they've lost that opportunity. That would be something that they're now contractors or whoever's going out can look at. And that would be, I would have thought, a fairly economical way of communicating together and everybody knowing that it's been looked at and it's actually, no, that's not possible, the way that we do a bit with the potholes.
No, that, that's right. That's right. I mean, it's there. We've got it all there already. So we just.
But it's just, you know, simple tweaks that we could add.
Yeah, so that would be talking to our parishes. But yeah, no, thank you for that, Jackie. I think that's all good stuff. Andrew, did you want to?
It's a huge document where you start. So yeah, I just note the positives. Yeah, no more to add.
Yeah, no, but no, thank you for that, Andrew. And yeah, I mean, it's, it's a reflection of all, all the work that your, your previous administration did. So I don't know if anyone else wanted to add things?
You know, it's fantastic to hear that the council's got this focus on our young people. And we heard that yesterday, Leader. And I cannot mention the statistic on page 61, where a lot of work has been carried out, but the statistics for our young drivers not going in the right direction. And I know from our services at work with young people, this is such a recurring tragedy across all the communities of Devon, sadly, that we are losing too many young people initially going to our roads. So following up councillor Horstens' point about opportunities, my question is whether there are any international innovations in this area or UK innovations where anyone has been able to, in an environment like ours, very rural and the type of road network we have. If there's anything happening worldwide that we should be considering as an opportunity to focus on with, you know, I'm aware, speaking to the new chief constable, that there's additional police resourcing, for example, coming in linked to the second homes council tax and funding. So there's an opportunity there to perhaps ask if there's something else we, we should be doing. And whether we could have that work sign posted because that's such a sad statistic for Devon, actually.
Yeah, no, thank, thank you, Donna. Paul.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Donna, for that. I mean, I think it's, in a way, it's, 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 it's a report in two halves, isn't it? Because it shows us, as the Chair said, at 2.10, the red indicators, and we can't ignore those, and we must do something about that. But then after that, it shows how we can move forward by doing a new corporate plan, which of course is something that our cabinet will take very seriously moving forward. So this isn't really the place to dwell on the red indicators, but it's disappointing they're there at all. But on the other hand, every council has them. It's just at the county level. It has some quite serious effects, I suppose. You know, we know that the roads are a problem, as the chief executive just said, you know, suicide rates and so forth, mortality rates. Economy, we've got a great economy tier team here. I think we shouldn't beat ourselves up too much about some of it, because I think some of the data in there is clearly still post pandemic. You know, it's still reflecting on stuff from 2023, and that was very much still a recovery period. So as we move forward, it'll be interesting to do fresh takes on that. But yes, very happy to note this in due course, Chair. Thank you.
James, and then I'll come to you, Jackie.
Thank you, Leader. I just want to focus on, on looking forward for a bit. Recommendation 11D is about the implementation of one council governance reporting and monitoring approach. So that's what we're looking forward, how we're going to monitor and govern the, the emerging strategic plan. I do wonder if this recommendation is best deferred until after we've defined the emerging strategic plan. Because it seems to me what we're looking to do here is define how we're going to report and monitor a plan that is yet to be defined. So I, I think we kind of one step ahead. I think it'd be far more sensible to define a strategic plan, our priorities, and then look at how we can govern that, report that and monitor that.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point, James. I don't know how other, other members feel about that. We, we don't want to have our hands tied that we, you know, because we don't know for honest what our strategic plan is. And we know we've, we've got some broad themes, but we need to drill down and get that into place before we actually do that. Is that going to cause a problem? Kerry?
I mean, we will absolutely work to, to do that to the pace of setting the strategic plan. I think the only point I would add under that recommendation, it's to support the corporate plan as well, which is annual. So we do need to probably pick up the pace on the corporate plan, even if we need to think differently about the pace on the strategic plan. The idea is to ensure that we do have a golden thread between everything we do as directorates, everything we do to satisfy improvement and our improvement journey to make sure that that is linked into the strategic priority. So it is a little chicken and egg, I accept, but there is, there is a need to allocate.
I want, James, if you could come up with, if you could, you know, with a choice of words there that, that you feel isn't tying our hands, but at the same time is covering the points that Kerry's just raised there, that we need, we need to have some kind of performance indicator plan in place.
Thank you, Lee. I, I fully support the, the principle of the one council governance. I think that, that's very, very sensible. And it will definitely move the, the council forward. I think I, I'm concerned about having our hands tied with the, the definitions and the terms of reference being set now, when we haven't yet looked at our strategic plan or agreed that. So if there is some way we could word that, that it's left or perhaps delegated itself to, to set the.
Yeah, okay. I think Maria might, might be able to help here.
Would you be content to maybe just remove the wording, the council's strategic plan, and we leave that to later? But we go against the corporate plan for now. So you're still getting the one council governance reporting. So we would literally just remove council's strategic plan. So the wording would be approve the implementation of a one council governance reporting monitoring approach to demonstrate progress and achievements against the corporate plan. That do what you want. And then, or would you like to say, and subject to a agreement of a future strategic plan? Do what you need it to do on the tin?
Leader, I, I think that, that's, that's, that's a good start. And perhaps adding to that, that we will then align it with the, the emerging strategic plan. So it's just very clear that we, absolutely, we need something now. But we want to move forward and align it to our strategic plans. So it's all seamless and integrated. I'm happy with that, Leader.
So I've added on to the end of that now. We've removed strategic plan from that point. And then I put and align with the future strategic plan, because I think that recognizes that's still to come. So that would be the new D.
Great. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to go Jackie, then I'll come to you, Paul. Yeah, Jackie.
So a minute ago, I just spoke really about the area that I think I have as my portfolio. But now I just wanted to look a bit wider and actually thinking about youth and young people. And I think we've, you know, as we know, and Paul has already alluded to this, of the legacy that we still have from Covid. And indeed, we do. And there's been rising problems for young people. And people who've been on this council before will know that I've often gone on about the problems for young people. I'm really concerned that, I mean, in, in the last three months, the youth service, youth centre in Totnes was subtly closed. And it's, it's opened up quite a can of worms. When I leave this meeting, I will be going to a group of actually sort of looking at a youth strategy that's been worked on in the town for the last two or three years by another different group. And I think there's work that's being done that we could actually invite others to share across the county and see whether that's what other people would like to do. So for example, creating new strategies at the local level and identify maybe a youth centre for young people and encouraging local people to start looking at how they can actually start to provide youth, youth activities. I think people step back from it, and we've actually got a massive gap in preemptive youth services, just basic universal access, youth services, where youngsters can go along, play table tennis without it being in a pub or just get let off some steam. It's, they've, so much has been taken away from young people and their freedoms. And they're just, just being young people. And I think it's something that, I mean, I know that in some places we're really lucky. I mean, in my town, we know that we'll be getting a long awaited skate park renewal in the next couple of years, which is absolutely fantastic. But not everywhere has that. But I do think that, you know, it's, it's actually preventative. So what we're ending up with, this is a very expensive package now of young people's needs having to be met. And a lot of which could actually be really reduced, I believe, by having good youth services, just basic stuff. It's, it's ordinary stuff, you know, the youth group that people here, some people here will know that I chair trade. We're providing youth services at least fortnightly to 900 young people now. And it's, it's just a shared partnership between the local parish councils and the fundraising that we do. And I think it's an easy model that could be shared across, plus, plus, you know, other ways of delivering it at the local level. And when people take the ownership locally, instead of moaning about the young people and their graffiti, they take an interest and they find them fun and, you know, want to be part of it. So I think it's, it's in our own interest financially, and I think it's in our own interest as a progressive council to try and help young people in a different way to what's happening at the moment, because we're actually, I think, really letting them down at the moment. And I think it, it shows in the, in the data that's now emerging.
No, thank you, Jackie. And I think we'd all agree with that. I mean, the one thing we have to remember, of course, is that we work within a financial constraint here. And in an ideal world, we'd love to provide all of it. Can I just say, I think on that point, that what we need to do, and I hope I said it on yesterday, is that we need to find out how we can work in better partnerships with people. Because I'm sure that we can deliver it with, with, you know, without the prohibitive costs. You know, we cannot set up a youth club in every single town in Devon, because we just don't have the funding to do it as much as we'd like to. So what we need to do is find a different way of delivering that. And I'm sure that is working in partnerships. So, you know, I know that Totnes is, you know, particularly proactive in those kind of areas. And, and I'm sure you'll, you, you know, that will help to set the blueprint about how we could do it across the whole of Devon. Anyway, but no, but, but thank you for raising that. So Paul, did you want to?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Charlie Brief. And we should talk later, Jackie. We have a similar thing in Colleton, which when Devon Youth Service moved out and we. which when Devon Youth Service moved out and we built a new building and so forth, we've funded the service, we've funded a new building which has got scouts and youth club, which has just relaunched after about four years not being there because of the pandemic. And to a certain extent, it's sad, isn't it, that we as a county council can't do, because as Julian says, as the Chair says, the money isn't there. But there, there are certainly local solutions there that these models might be worth looking, looking at for other people. I was just going to come in, Chair, finally, on just on the red indicator on the sustainable and stronger council, which relates to sickness absence and staff turnover and indeed gender pay gap. But I just think we need as a cabinet to acknowledge that, that if there has been sickness absence, and this can happen for all sorts of reasons within an organisation, you know, we want to send the message out clearly to the employees, the officers and all employees at Devon County Council, that we are here for you, and we will want to listen to what you have to say as well. But I'm sure, under the leadership of the Chief Exec, it's moving towards, you know, a better place. But that is always, if you see that as a, as a red indicator on a council, it's worth raising here, just so that we acknowledge it, so that that can be heard. Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, no, thank you, Paul. I think Maria, did you want to comment on that, particularly around the sickness and absences?
Thank you, Chair. Just to, to clarify, so with the report, we've used the kind of the overarching LGA indicators, which they include schools data. So when you look at our corporate data that doesn't include state schools, it's considerably less in relation to turnover. So we've detailed it in the report, but so our turnover is actually lower now than the national average. So it's at 9.06 compared to the national average of 13.6. So it has been reducing, but I think the LGA indicators are slightly misleading in some ways in that includes our maintained schools workforce. Similarly, absence is an area that we're working on and has reduced to, again, below the national average. So we're at now 8.9 days lost per employee. So there's still work to do, which I'd absolutely take your point, but it is going in the right direction. I just wanted to clarify the bit about the schools inclusion, because it gives a little bit of a false sense in terms of the corporate workforce.
Thanks for that clarification, Maria. It's really important. Thank you very much.
Yeah, just following on from that. I mean, I, you know, that's where indicators can be slightly misleading, because we, we need to know, as, as, you know, from the corporate point of view, are we doing all right as a council with our employees? And are they happy and are they staying, or are we, and, and, you know, that is more important, because just say the schools sort their, get their act together, but we don't, then it wouldn't necessarily show up as an indicator there that we're, we're actually, you know, there's an issue here and we need to look at it. So yeah, just that's a sort of, you know, that we need, sometimes you need to drill down a bit into them to get a, a more realistic picture of what's going on. Richard?
I'm, yeah, I'm following on from the same point. I was wondering if, if we're dividing out those figures for corporate staff and for school staff, is, are the school rates comparable to other schools operating under different models?
I think I need to come back to you on that one, so I can provide the data in relation to the school side of things and circulate that around following the meeting.
Thank you. Right, members, any, any more for any more on that? No? Well, I will move the recommendations as they stand, apart from the amendments to Recommendation D, where we're taking out against the, so council strategic plan, and take that out and then adding at the end, and to align the wording on that.
Noting alignment with the future strategic plan.
Yeah, no, thank you. I think, so I will move those A, B, C and D. Can I have a second there for that, please? Yeah, Paul, thank you. And all those in favour, please show. That's unanimous. Thank you. Matthew, I was quite interested to see your picture in the report that we got there, sort of, sort of, sort of, so yeah, sort of, impressionist. It's, it's going through your impressionist phase there, yeah. Anyway, Agenda item 12, delegated actions. That's for noting. We're happy to note that. Are we all okay with that, noting? Yeah. Jackie, did you want to say something?
Do we not have to add anything in, that's, for example, the things, the couple of motions that came out of, well, particularly the one motion about 20s plenty? Does that not need to be woven into this now, or does that ultimately happen with the officers? Do we not put that in the forward plan in terms of how it's coming back? Or is this just regular stuff that comes through from the directors?
These are decisions that are taken under delegated powers. What we have in the forward plan is a standing item for any motions, or anything that comes from a committee with, with executive powers. So it's covered under a general, a general heading.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so the delegate, the delegated action for noting, so we all have to note that, and then the forward plan to be agreed. So I think, I think Karen's explained that your motion will be coming forward to, to the, to the next cabinet meeting on that one. I know there, there are only two areas on the forward plan for June, aren't there? That's the, the revenue and capital outrun and the county road highway maintenance capital budget. So that's what we've got up there at the moment. There's also the, I think it's the household fund as well, that's coming in on June.
Home for Children, we've got on as 25th of June, along with capital programme budget and announcements for O Campton to change. I think we have a few things move around just to.
Um, so are we all okay with that? Do people want to add things in, take things out? I mean, obviously, it's not a, it's not cast in stone, whatever, we can change that. But it's important for members of the public and other members of the council to know when we are discussing particularly key issues or something that they may be interested in and want to come to cabinet to discuss. But so I will, so what's the recommendation to agree the forward plan as it stands at the moment? So I'll move that. You happy to second that? Are we all happy with it? Yep. Okay, lovely. Thank you for that. Agenda item, oh, trying to catch up. That's it, I've been told. So nothing, nothing else, nothing, absence of press and public. Thank you all very much, and I will declare the meeting closed. Thank you. Just to our close meeting now. Just a couple of things. Okay. Not, I'm going to say anything really.